All right, calls to order, as I said before, 6:15 PM. So our report out from closed session is that the city council is satisfied with the city manager's performance, and we will continue to evaluate the city manager's performance on an annual basis. So just to let everybody know that this is going to be a pretty annual thing for the evaluation. So, thank you. Oh, sorry, Bruce, I will get you. Sorry about that, Bruce. You should be able to unmute yourself now.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right, so we are going to move on to our next item, which is a special presentation, which is the Read Across Siskiyou Proclamation. We'll back up and read that for the record. Thank you for your patience. All right. All right, so this is a proclamation of the 13th Annual Read Across Siskiyou Event sponsored by First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission. Whereas the ultimate goal of the First Five Siskiyou Children and Families Commission is that all of Siskiyou's children from prenatal to five years of age will be healthy, ready to learn, and supported in safe nurturing families and communities. And whereas children in Siskiyou County from prenatal to five years of age have a successful start in life through daily reading with supportive and nurturing families, caregivers, educators, and community leaders. And whereas early literacy is the foundation for academic, social, emotional, and economic success. And whereas First Five Siskiyou in partnership with the Family Community Resource Centers dedicates one day each year to promote early literacy through Read Across Siskiyou by providing the same titled book read by guest readers to children in various preschool, kindergarten, childcare settings, and libraries throughout Siskiyou County on the same day and provide each child with a copy of that book. And therefore, the city of Dunsmere hereby proclaims November 18th, 2020 as the 13th anniversary of Read Across Siskiyou. And be it that this body enthusiastically endorses daily reading, singing, and playing with children as a critical foundation for healthy development and lifelong success. So thank you so much for bringing that to our attention. And I'm going to move us over to, there was another request for a special presentation by Councilmember Keisler.
If, Madam Mayor, if it's all the same to you, I'd really appreciate if, if we could take a moment of silence for Bill McIntyre, who is a good friend of mine and a lot of the council members, I know you guys knew him. So if you could, may we please have a moment of silence for Bill McIntyre? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Patty, you're in our first.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Keisler. All right, we will move us now to item, general public comment, which is the time that members of the public can present or make comments to the city council on an item that is not on the agenda or an item that is on our consent agenda, which is listed here, which is our check register for September 26 through October 9. And the updated and revised resolution regarding the 1920 CDBG grant application program. So we do have one comment. Go ahead, Tim. Oh, sorry, Tim, I accidentally re-muted you. You should be able to unmute yourself.
And Michelle O'Gorman wants to be able to be unmuted down the line, too.
Yep, I see the chat.
Can you hear me?
All right, Tim, yes.
You can't hear me now?
Whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Yes, we can hear you, Tim.
Okay, no, it's okay. So after the last council meeting, I received a message from the city manager indicating that the city may proceed with Section 9.14.060 of the Abandoned and Distressed Real Property Ordinance relating to upkeep of vacant buildings. Weed, as I think most of you know, is proceeding on this course of action with some success. It currently has two of its downtown properties in receivership. A major step forward in getting abandoned buildings fixed up and occupied with new businesses. We followed Weed's lead in adopting this ordinance, and I think it's time now for the city to proceed with its actual enforcement. We have a number of Dunsmere residents who've been told to follow city ordinances and clean up their home properties. Let me just, I just said that we have a number of Dunsmere residents who've been told to follow city ordinances and fix and clean up their home properties. They may be wondering why owners of some of our downtown buildings haven't been told the same thing. Thank you.
I thank you, Tim. And Michelle should be next.
Good evening. My name is Michelle O'Gorman, and I'm the Executive Director for the Siskiyou Community Resource Collaborative, which is the 501(c)(3) umbrella for the Dunsmere Community Resource Center. And I see that Allison Scholl has joined us, and she has a copy of the book. And I saw her waving it. If you could hold it up, Allison, and just, The Lion and the Mouse. There it is. It's a darling book. Oh, Allison, we can't hear you.
Yeah, Allison, you should be able to unmute yourself if you'd like.
Oh, good. Okay, yes. So I have a copy here. I have it in my screen behind me. Can you see? I was trying to get creative and get people in the mood. Anyway, so.
Sometimes we make you wear mouse ears, though. Be glad we're not embarrassing.
Sorry. So I have copies for the city council, and I'm wondering, I went by the office and it was closed. So what's the best way to get you copies of this book?
I think it would be to take it to the City Hall when we are open. I believe it is 9:30 to 2 o'clock, or 9 to 2 is when City Hall is open.
Can I read?
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I read?
Big Dave, yes, yes.
It's gonna be set up kind of, it's gonna be set up kind of differently this year. And yes, we want everybody who wants to read to read it. We're gonna have some online things, and we're gonna have some Zoom platforms. And, you know, because everything's so different right now, we're, we're just jumping to being adaptable and creative in the ways that we present the stories and the reading. But it'll be, you know, it'll be, it'll still involve the kids reading, and, and it's exciting. It's a good message. It's a very positive message, so.
I would love to help.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Same here, Bruce here, same.
Okay.
Okay, great. And you might be able to help me, Bruce, get those videos online and that sort of thing, because that's not my forte at all.
Gotcha.
So I really appreciate that, but we appreciate all of your support at the city. And we, we look forward to this event on November 18th. So thank you very much for doing the proclamation.
Thanks for doing what you guys do.
Yes, thank you. Great. So next up, I have Devin, and then David Hicks. Devin, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hello. Yeah, I was pushing various buttons. I finally hit the right one. Hi, people, Devin Warner.
Hi, Devin.
Hi, I'm, 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 I'm too taken interest in the, the disused and distressed buildings ordinance. And I, I've noticed there's a few buildings on Dunsmere Avenue with windows covered with plywood and not to mention, of course, buildings that have had things in the window for years or nothing in the window, and you can see the plaster falling down inside the rooms. And so, yeah, people are concerned about this. We're wondering if any of these buildings have been inspected, if registrations are happening. Is the whole thing in abeyance because of COVID? I noticed the movie theater had the paint, the ceiling paint in their little foyer was all over the floor in big pieces a few days ago. And the reason I could see that was because they had lights on inside and a sign up front saying they're opening for Halloween. And I've been thinking a lot about Bill McIntyre lately, actually, because he was the last manager there. And I believe he mentioned something about asbestos paint in that building. So I'm, I'm concerned. I'd love to see the inside of that building. I'd love to go in there. And I'm concerned that asbestos paint is being disturbed by people that aren't wearing hazmat and wondering specifically if that building has been inspected and if it has passed muster with the city enough to invite the public in. One other topic I wanted to mention was the historic district, and I understand there's, there is movement afoot to, to reinforce our historic district and start doing something with it. And as a, as a city commissioner on the planning commission, I'm hereby volunteering to be on a task force if that's, if that's in the offing. And thank you. Thank you for all you're doing, people.
I thank you. All right, I'm going to go over to David Hicks, and let's see if he can get the microphone working.
Can you hear this?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
It actually worked. Thank you, Juliana.
Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I will be brief. I did make, put up a little note, but I'll first mention to Juliana those, those codes for PCs and IMAX. I'll drop a copy off for you for handicap people to be able to use at City Hall tomorrow. What I wanted to comment on is I've been hearing many, 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 way more than I would ever expect, people complaining about code enforcement only working as a, on parking issues. I don't know if it's actually true, but the complaints were so many that it must be at least partially true. And, and that there's a lack of any other code enforcement going on. So whatever else we do, I think code enforcement's number one priority should be changed by our city manager to the downtown buildings and the public, appearance to the public and tourists who come through town. It's way more important than, than that somebody's parked the wrong way on the street or that their boat is on some side of the street, but it's not supposed to be parked there. That's not all that important. So I would just ask if the council might encourage the city manager to shift the code enforcement over to some other areas that I think are probably, in the long run, much more important. Thank you very much.
I thank you. And then Andrea Hurd, did you happen to have, did you want to give a public comment?
Oh, I was just gonna say that Andrea Hurd, resident of Dunsmere, I'm the director of the Family and Community Resource Center in Weed, and Steve Bryan asked me to come in his place. He would like to have been here. He and the Dunsmere Community Resource Center are working hard for the community. And, but he had a school board meeting for his children's school in Big Springs and wasn't able to come tonight. So I wanted to say hello and send his, his appreciation for everyone celebrating the Read Across Siskiyou. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are in general public comment. Are there any other general public comments for tonight? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move us forward in our schedule and move to staff and member comments. City Manager Yuhas, would you like to start us off tonight? And Todd, you should be able to mute yourself.
Hey, all right, so a couple of things. We're gonna get into this later in the agenda, but I wanted to let people know that we went through the, you know, the bid opening process for the downtown water tank project. And we have, you know, a winning bidder, which we'll be discussing later. But the bids came in quite a bit lower than we expected them to. You know, by 1.8 million, that doesn't mean that, that's just money that, you know, all that money can be put into additional projects. There's, we need to pay for the automatic meter readers. Yeah, we know, we need to hold some money for unexpected contingencies. But post that, any additional funds that we have will allow us to expand the scope of the project. On the Mossberry Trail, I wanted folks to know that where we finally got a, you know, somebody willing to listen to us at UP. In fact, they contacted me this time around wanting to get engineering drawings and submitted preliminary drawings. It was enough to suffice for now. But the Trails Association folks, landscape architect working, you know, on, on completing those drawings as the UP folks want those to, to have those put in front of UP's structural engineering department so we can then move forward. And, you know, this person that I'm dealing with seems to think that we have a, you know, she thinks that she can shepherd through the issue of getting a lease for the right amount of time, so it's worth our while and for a, an amount of money that is also not onerous, given that we are reducing risk for the railroad. And finally, talked extensively to the MOPF's office, have their ear. They understand what it is that I'm looking for from them. They have the statement that I'm, I want, you know, our representative to work on, and so that's in the works. So those are, oh, and I guess one other thing, at the last council meeting, it was brought up that, under council protocols, there was the removal of an item called Agenda Approval. And it was brought to my attention that actually council voted to remove that piece or that portion of the agenda, you know, that, that title, Agenda Approval, as of April 2019 with a 5-0 council vote, and I'm not exactly sure why, but that's what I've got.
All right, thank you. Any questions for City Manager Yuhas? All right, seeing none, we'll go to council member comments. Councilmember Arth, do you want to start us off today?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, colleagues and members of the public. I have three bouquets to toss during my few minutes. The first is to the city and its planning commission. I noticed several members of the council were part of the Zoom meeting last night where our planning commission considered the difficult issue of short-term rentals. And I thought that Chair Spurlock did a magnificent job. The staff, Todd, and our city planner did a magnificent job. The members of the planning commission themselves, all of the public with plenty of time got to say their piece. And the members of the planning commission got to have intelligent discussion. And it was really, to me, the beginning of good things to come for our city. So thank you to everybody involved. The second bouquet goes to the mayor for directing me and to some extent the city manager to the California Department of Parks and Recreation, specifically the Office of Historic Preservation. The city manager and I had a nearly one-hour-long discussion with one of the senior restoration architects and one of the managers at the Office of Historic Preservation on how we could re-energize the oversight of our historic district, particularly bringing back the California Theater resources, plan, and strategies. And here again, I feel like we're really starting to move forward on behalf of the residents and citizens of Dunsmere. The third issue is to simply let you know that the Siskiyou Arts Museum last Saturday opened an exhibit called Let Freedom Ring. And I am a sponsor of the exhibit because I think democracy is hugely important. If you go to the exhibit, you can see a photograph that the curator of SAM found through the Sisson Art Museum. It is a 1903 whistle-stop by President Teddy Roosevelt. To me, it looks like right after the Great Fire of '03, because it looks like they're rebuilding Sacramento Avenue. But there are historic photographs, campaign buttons, the Marianne Kickerpill chairs. And all of it is a prompt to urge all of us to vote in the upcoming election. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna move over to Councilmember Keisler. Do you have any comments for tonight?
Well, I'm definitely gonna have to check out the Arts Museum. That sounds pretty cool. Peter, thank you for letting me know about that. I'm very, very excited about the Mossberry Fall Project moving forward. We finally have somebody's ear at UP, and that, that's what it took. So again, kudos, you guys for pushing that through. I want to say a bunch of crap about the crap about the upcoming elections, but I'm, I'm not, I just want everybody to know that I'm not a henchman. That, that, that word's just stuck in my craw. So now they got that out there. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Brian?
I have no comments this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Deutsch?
Thank you, ma'am. First of all, I'd like to point out that Cheryl Petty, in memory of Bruce Petty, is really working hard now to get the 1727 engine repainted. If you notice, it's in partial progress. If you'd like to donate towards that, please reach out to Cheryl Petty, and you can be part of that restoration that will be sitting there for a long time to come. I want to talk just a short bit of time about water rates. A lot of people right now with the idea of Measure H are asking, what about all, why, why do we keep getting raises in our water rates? I had a chance today to talk with our USDA rep up in Wairika, Kevin Demers. And we talked about the process that we've gone through. And very shortly, the, the point is, is that up until this new era in Dunsmere politics, when 2015, we started doing things differently, there was no way that we would be qualified to get any grants or any low-cost loans. We weren't in any position financially. Our rates weren't there. We didn't have the right things set up for it. And because of the work we did over a period of five years, and because of the fact that we raised rates slowly over five years, we now are able to, later on in this meeting, talk about all the different water mains that are going to be replaced and upgraded. So I hope that people understand that we've gone through a process that took five years. We don't anticipate any new increases in water rates, and that's where we got there. A couple of other quick things. Tim Pierce has come up with an idea, some research on how to do removable speed bumps, and I'd like to look into that. I'll bring that up later on with the future agenda items. Dave and I are both interested in that. And supposedly, that would allow us to have slow, slowdown traffic for, for some of the areas with kids. And at the same time, when the snowplows come clear, they could, through, they could be removed. Finally, COVID, we're going through a crazy time. And what people need to understand here in Dunsmere is that if you look at places like Wisconsin, the huge increase in the number of cases and deaths is in rural areas, small rural towns. And if you look just south of us right now, Shasta County has gone purple. So it really makes it important that we continue to do our part, wearing masks, social distancing, washing hands, so that we can make it through this next peak that is coming all around us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Deutsch. My, my comments tonight are very brief. I've been kind of running around doing a lot of other stuff. Just to back up, City Manager Yuhas, I've been taking a look at lease structures for the Mossberry Trail and putting that together for review from our city attorney so that we at least have a jumping-off point and have those documents ready to go for that discussion. Hopefully, we, you know, my hope is to bring an item to council in December or January to hopefully approve a lease. Is the idea, but we'll see how that goes with timelines. As far as other things, still continuing to work on the Children's Park funding application, just waiting on a couple of numbers from the playground rep and the appraiser. So moving forward with that project. I did have a really good meeting with the local government commission, also known as LGC. They offer technical assistance to cities for upcoming grant projects. And LGC earmarked the city of Dunsmere as a good candidate for future planning, transportation planning projects, so that might go to your speed bumps there, as well as other transportation-based funding, because we have not had a Caltrans grant for transportation funding in a while. So working with them closely to, and, and the city manager to talk about different things. I also talked to LGC about the possibility of funding technical assistance for a zero emission vehicle plan, which I believe Councilmember Arth discusses quite a bit, which would look into the charging stations and what Dunsmere would need to put in place to have, have our city be friendly to the zero emission vehicles that are getting more and more popular. The other thing we took a look at was Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA compliance for the city and different areas for connectivity for aging populations and pedestrians. And other than that, I can't think of anything else. But Councilmember Deutsch, you have a question?
Yeah, ma'am, I just forgot one thing, and it was regarding Peter Arth and what he mentioned earlier about the planning commission. I listened in on a part of it, too. And I gotta admit, I was really impressed with the level of work they put into it and the listening that they did. So I'm later on gonna move that we triple all the commissioners pay.
Unfortunately, none of us get paid, so three times zero is zero.
That was my calculation, too, but there you go.
Yeah. Great, yeah. So working on some of those things and looking to try and find funding for some of these projects that we don't necessarily have funding or the resources for. All right, anybody else have any closing comments?
Just, before we get to the minutes, can we get an update from Todd? I'm simply curious, as far as the parcel that the city owns that was up for purchase, how did the negotiations go after our last meeting? Is there any update?
With the Shearer Avenue piece?
Yes.
So I, so we played phone tag, and essentially, I just gave up because I'm not hearing back from the guy and sent him an email saying that we won't entertain anything below his original offer, and I'm waiting for a response.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no other comments or questions, I'm gonna move us into committee reports. I believe there was a finance committee meeting. Am I correct?
There was an effort, Madam Chair. We usually meet on Mondays, and for some reason, we switched off to Tuesday of this week. We were not able to achieve a quorum. We were missing our chairman. We were missing Mike Delabana, citizen member. And we did have Paul Reuter on the line, and we were ready to get an update on our sewer fund. But because of the missing members, we decided to simply put the finance committee over until November 2nd.
Okay, that happens. That's okay. Are there any other committee meetings? Or committee reports? All right, seeing none, I will move us into approval of the minutes for today. We are considering the city council regular meeting, October 1st, 2020.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Keisler, seconded by Councilmember Deutsch. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I will abstain because I was not at the meeting, and the minutes carry. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, we'll move on now to our consent agenda. We have two items up for consideration tonight. Item A is check register for September 26 through October 9, 2020. And item B is an up- And item B is an updated and revised resolution regarding the 1920 Community Development Block Grant Application. Is there any discussion?
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll give it to Councilmember Brian. And any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler? Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Arth?
Aye.
And myself as an aye and the motion carries. And Dave, you're really quiet, which is a phrase I didn't think I would ever say. Just so like, you know, you're very quiet on your votes. All right, we'll move us now into our public hearing for tonight. So we do have a public hearing for the 2017 California Department of Housing and Community Development, Community Development Block Grant Remiddle and Disencumberance. City Manager Yuhas?
Yes, so we have money on the books from 2017 and we're moving into a place where, since it didn't get out the door, we've got a limited amount of time to, you know, a very limited, very limited amount of time that we could spend that money. And what we've decided in dealing with our consultant on this, on, you know, moving forward on developing the micro enterprise and grant program is that we would relinquish the money from 2017 and replace it with current year 1920 funds, which have less strings attached to them and would allow us to get our program up and running faster because there are less onerous regulations attached to it. So it's swapping old money for fresh, essentially.
Okay, councilmembers, do you have any questions for City Manager Yuhas?
Yes, just when we adopted our application or, you know, when we moved to apply for the new grants, I knew we'd have to remit these funds if we were accepted. Are we fully in an acceptance for an amount on the new grant?
We don't have a specific number. We need to be approved, but they have, it's, it's.
All right, councilmembers, are there any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'm going to move us into our public hearing. I will open the public hearing for the 17 California HCD, CDBG, all of the letters, remiddle disencumberance. Would anyone like to make a public comment at this time? Again, if you can either go to the participants tab and raise your hand or you can let me know via the chat that you'd like to make a comment.
Or star nine.
Or a star nine if you are on the phone and you would like to make a comment. Thank you for the reminder. All right, I do not see any takers for public comment on this item. So I will close the public hearing at 6:50 PM and move us into discussion. Is there any discussion on this item?
Madam Mayor, I, I confess, I took a bathroom break and didn't hear the complete presentation. But when I was reviewing this item this afternoon, I had two questions. One is, it looks like we're giving the state of California back $500,000. And my question is, then what? That is, do we get the same amount from the 2019-20 program? Question two is obviously being involved with a number of businesses in Dunsmere. In the name of communication, was there any consultation with any of the Dunsmere businesses or the chamber as to whether this is the right thing to do or not? Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, you, so essentially it's this, we have $2017 that never got out the door. And by relinquishing these funds, because, you know, there's only a certain amount that we can carry, we will actually get, actually we'll end up with more money than we will, you know, be relinquishing with less strings attached, given the 1920 guidelines. And we also have COVID CDBG money coming in. And what this does, because there are less regulations, it will allow us to get the micro enterprise and grant program off the ground faster.
And, and as far as the consultation, answer to question number one was perfect. But I do think as the city of Dunsmere, we need to start working with the business community to assess their needs. That is, there may be some businesses that are not so micro, that would be willing to accept a loan at favorable terms. So as we move forward in putting the CDBG funds to good use, we need a loan committee, we need an outreach program, and it gets right back to our earlier discussion of the one-man band. But I think these are things we need to look forward to, to make this an effective program. Thank you.
Agreed.
Thank you. All right, councilmembers, do you have any other comments or discussion on this item or would anyone like to make a motion?
I could make a motion.
Go ahead.
Is this a motion to adopt Resolution 2021, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Dunsmere to remit and disencumber Community Development Block Grant Award Number 17-CDBG-1212029? That's my motion.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Councilmember Brian? And is there a discussion on the motion at hand?
Does this have an impact on our budget?
None.
None.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move into a roll call vote. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Arth?
Aye.
And myself as an aye, motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to, we have no old business, but we will move into our two new business items. So our first today is item A, which is accept pace recommendation and award construction bid upon accepted concurrence from USDA RD for the water project. City Manager Yuhas, go ahead.
Okay, so I mentioned this briefly in, at the beginning. We, one, we had a bid opening. We need to award that construction bid, came in quite low. And the other is, we have a letter of concurrence that's required from the USDA, USDA Rural Development, which we now have in our possession, and it's just the last thing we need before we're able to rock and roll and move forward.
Right.
Essentially.
Are there any questions from councilmembers?
I just would like to point out, I did talk with Kevin Demers today and he was really impressed with the level of support he got both from, from Todd and from Blake. So I want to give them kudos for the work they put into making this happen.
Yes, thank you. Is there any other questions on the acceptance of the, or the possibility of awarding the bid for the water project? Seeing no other questions, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment on the possibility of accepting the pace recommendation and award construction bid upon accepted concurrence with USDA RD for the water project? Any? Public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close public comment on this item and move us to discussion. Is there any discussion, councilmembers?
Madam Mayor?
Go ahead, I'm, go ahead, Councilmember Deutsch.
I just wanted to, if I could, unless somebody objects, I'd like to be able to make this motion since I've worked this since 2015.
I have a few questions.
Before I make it, go ahead. I just wanted to have that opportunity if I could.
Yeah, I'm going to go with Councilmember Arth. He had his hand up and then we'll put a councilmember Brian.
Well, two things. The first, I have to say, Councilmember Deutsch, this didn't begin in 2015. This began in 2008. And most of the city council was recalled in 2010 because they dared to entertain the notion of being responsible and fixing our water and sewer system with grants and low-interest loans. It cost us dearly to be that brave. Mario Rubino and Peter Arth got recalled along with a couple of their council members. So it didn't start in 2015. It started in 2008. The other thing is that I think Tim Holt raised a good issue for all the people that wonder why my water and sewer and solid waste rates keep going up and bills keep going up. I think it's an appropriate use of the billing envelope to inform our customers that here's where your money is going. It's going into now more than $10 million in upgrading our infrastructure. The city acted responsibly. Your money is being well-spent. And we're all the beneficiaries of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brian?
Yeah, I just wanted to inquire how many bids we received.
And we got, let's see, we had four bids.
And was this, were the others much higher or was there large range relative to?
Large range. The second, the person that came in second place, they've actually placed a public records request and I provided them everything except the financials from the winning bidder. They were fairly close, but clear from their, the winning bidder's credentials and just being a little bit lower. Yep, they, they were clear winners.
And this company is able to work with our timeframe? You know, it's already shifted to some extent, but it might, might have other things come up.
Yep.
Page 20 shows you.
Yep, I was gonna say Blake just said that all the bid summaries in the past. Okay, are there any other questions or pieces of discussion from the councilmembers on this item? Seeing none, Councilmember Deutsch?
Well, Peter, if you'd like to take the lead, I'll demur. Would you like to take the lead? I'll take the second motion.
No, you go right ahead, sir. I just wanted to correct the record.
I recognize that. I realize that took place in talking with Kevin today. He mentioned that he had to walk out of the building because it was so demoralizing to see the opposition to what you were trying to do. So with that in mind, I move to accept the recommendation from Pace Engineering and upon concurrent acceptance with USDA RD award both Schedule A and Schedule B of the 2020 Water Main Replacement Project to SNL Group Incorporated.
All right, is there a second?
No, I don't care. It's a team effort. Go for it.
It's gonna fail if someone doesn't.
All right, I'll second the motion.
There you go.
All right, Councilmember Keisler has seconded. Any other discussion on the motion at hand? One thing to note on the motion is that USDA has concurrently accepted. So we're, we're good there. All right. Any other pieces? Great.
I'd like to amend my motion then and say, instead of upon, say with concurrent acceptance. Is that okay with you, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. Has amended.
Great. All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, we'll move into roll call. Councilmember Deutsch?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Keisler?
Aye.
Councilmember Arth?
Aye.
And myself as an aye, motion carries, and we have accepted the bid. So let's move forward with that project. All right, let's go on to our last piece of new business, which is discussion about visioning and priorities for the upcoming year. I know that this was an item that Councilmember Arth requested, so I'm going to let Councilmember Arth, if you want to open this item up.
Well, here again, I, I had a conversation with Citizen Tim Holt. Tim Holt and his wife have lived in the community for 25 years. And I said, Tim, here's an opportunity. We need to have a plan. We need to do visioning. And he said, Peter, I'm so tired of being on committees, whether I chair them or I'm a committee member, and it's about visioning and priorities and the city never, ever follows through. It's a lot like Lucy holding the football for Charlie Brown and jerking it back at the last instance. So when I came on the council in 2008, I proposed Dunsmere 2020. And the council I led unanimously adopted Dunsmere 2020. And it was going to be about visioning and priorities. And immediately after the recall, the city council jettisoned any idea about visioning and priorities. We have a mayor who is educated and skilled in planning. We have a city manager who's educated and skilled in planning. Pre-COVID, there was an effort led by the mayor to actually survey the citizens of Dunsmere and businesses as well. I think the last time I heard, we got 91 some responses. But I really, as a member of the council, as a member of the finance committee, how can you run a multimillion-dollar general law city without a vision and a plan and priority setting? So really, it's out of my hands. I have two years left on the council. And my only hope is to get back to where we were 12 years ago. Thank you.
Okay. City Manager Yuhas, do you want to include anything with that?
Um, well, we, you know, we have the results of the visioning. You know, I think that we need to redistribute. Oh, there you go. Good man, right here, mind reader. So I think that we need to look at what the responses are and start a discussion about, you know, what, what we've learned.
So just to review with the councilmembers, what the questions were, we had, what makes, what makes Dunsmere a great place to work and/or live? What features do you think are most at risk to change and why? And what should change in the city of Dunsmere? How would you describe the city of Dunsmere to someone who has never visited? What services or projects should the city of Dunsmere create and/or improve in the next two years? And we have the city of Dunsmere sometimes faces tight budget years. What services could we reduce or could live without? And then we also did the priorities calculation. So I do have those. Those are completely done. So these were the categories in the ranking that we had, which I shared with the finance group. So basically, you know, next steps if council would like, I can, I've been meaning to take all of these and it's a little bit of a time intense process because what typically we would do is go through all of these responses and highlight and, and, and see how many times people mention certain words or, you know, how often people, you know, for the changer or how they would describe the city, we find commonalities and common terms. And then we basically shove those together and try and make a visioning statement with those common terms. So we can do that. That can be our next step. The other thing we can consider is we could go back out and do another survey and change the questions if we want to do something different. So there's a couple of different options that we can do here. So direction from the council actually would be appreciated on this. We do have a visioning statement on the city webpage, but it's pretty straightforward. It's not very in-depth, so maybe that's something we, we can adjust. So when we get to discussion, that would kind of. So when we get to discussion, that would kind of be, you know, some of the discussing, discussion points that we could do for this item. Do the council members have any questions before I open public comment? All right, seeing none, I will open this up for public comment. Would anyone like to comment on the visioning, visioning and priorities for the upcoming year? Again, you can go to the raise your hand in the participant section, or you could just let me know on the chat that you'd like to make a comment. All right, I don't see any takers right now, so I'll, I'll bring it back to the council. Oh, sorry, Devin. Go ahead when you're ready.
Hello, people. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, guys. Thanks for bringing us up, Peter. I think when I was first appointed to the Planning Commission, some months ago, we were asked to come up with goals and priorities for the city, and we all submitted something, I think. I, of course, tend to be, you know, rather verbose, and my list was long. I love this town. I think this is a great little town. It can be better than it is, and I think it's important for us all to have a part in that. Housing has to be a big priority for us is figuring out how to expand our housing stock. I'd like to see us find a way to keep Airbnb and short-term rentals in check. I guess there's a little controversy about whether or not that's really a problem now. It may not in fact be a problem now, but it will be if we don't keep it in control. I'd like to see more opportunities for our kids. I'm totally in favor of the pool being open much longer. Of course, I'm thrilled about all the pipes that you guys are about to fix. I think that's obviously a pretty important priority, but I think the thing that's really not happening that needs to be happening is getting more businesses in the storefronts in downtown Dunsmere. I mean, I understand we have a few storefronts that are used by businesses, but not as storefronts. And we have storefronts that are ostensibly businesses, which have never been open anytime I have ever been present in Dunsmere. And we also have truly derelict buildings in Dunsmere. And just the vitality of having the few new businesses that have popped up in the last few years is astounding. And that could be, I think, one of the most important things we could do as a city. And maybe that means following in the footsteps of weed and seizing property by eminent domain. I know that's radical. But if that's the only path forward, I think we have to be honest about it. And I'm not saying that that will be for all the, all the buildings in town that I'm referring to, but in extreme cases, that, that may be a bullet that we got to bite. So I'm here to be part of it in any way that you guys think I can be helpful. And I'd really like to, I'd really like us to work on the historic district and just, you know, enriching the lives of our kids in Dunsmere. So thank you so much. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any other public comment? All right, seeing none, we'll move into discussion. We'll start with Councilmember, Councilmember Art, if you'd like to start off the discussion.
Well, I'd really, to my colleagues and you, Madam Mayor, I don't have anything to add. We're facing a very fluid period in state history and local history. And obviously, we've been sort of bunkered down for the year of COVID. I think we will be one of the first communities in the northern state to potentially emerge with the ability to actually vision and set priorities. I do read the campaign material. It sounds like the airport is still an issue. It sounds like funding for the library and the community pool are still an issue. I give Matthew Bryan great credit for crafting what we call the Community Grant Program, but there's work to be done there. All of our annual events, railroad days, art walk, jazz festival, the list goes on. We need to develop partnerships with the business community, and the chamber, as I understand it, is in flux. The chairperson resigned. And these are all things that, to me, if we get through the fire season into November, December, January, February, I would like us to be working actively on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kaisler, do you have any discussion?
Well, this COVID's just, it's, you know, it's changed a lot of things. And dealing with it, every day is different. So I, I agree with Peter. We, we need to do a reach out and partner with our businesses and support them. See what they need. That's kind of our job, is see what they need and, and, and see what we can do for them. See how we can help them get through this. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Brian.
Yeah, I think that, you know, in my experience with this council in the last almost two years, we've been kind of participating in an ongoing visioning statement. You know, every time we direct city staff to spend a dollar of our taxpayers' money, we're interpreting everything we know about Dunsmere's values and the practical world and how to navigate it. And we're effectively, you know, restating our, our vision and priorities based on all of our interactions with our constituents. I think that the more interactions we have between Dunsmere citizens as a whole and city leadership, the more closely aligned we'll be. But I'm actually quite proud of our, largely due to Councilman Art's insistence, revisiting this topic on a very regular basis. I mean, it's very central to the budget process we've engaged in the last two years.
Thank you. Councilmember Deutsch.
Thank you, ma'am. I think there's two different ways of looking at this. On one hand, every time there's been an attempt in the city to get together a group of citizens to come up with a visioning exercise, it's been limited by the number of responses. We did have a, what I think so far has been probably the best exercise we had was a few years ago, when we actually had two different meetings where approximately 15 people or so showed up and wordsmithed some ideas into a three-sentence, I believe, visioning statement. But no matter what we're doing, unless we come up with something beyond what we've been doing so far, we're just going to end up with 100 people or 50 people or 30 people and try to extrapolate something profound out of that. Really doesn't make sense. The one thing that I, I think I want to get back into, we were, I was going to try and do with you all back in the beginning of this year was a, an exercise in visioning that they had at Etna. And it was building Dunsmere's future, and that was meant to be an in-person thing. And the key to that was, is it wasn't just fill out a piece of paper. It was people back in those days in a room, sitting together, talking and working, and then coming up with a report to a larger group. And I think that if we really want to move beyond where we are right now and come up with anything more useful, we need to put the effort into creating an event like that and having an event, say, in the spring, which would be leading up until the, the summer season, the tourist season, so that we could revitalize the city following at least a year of COVID and getting ready to get back into the swing of things with another season. So those are my thoughts on it. I'm just open to ideas, but I think if we're going to really make something out of this, we have to, number one, come up with a larger number of people. And when they come up with their responses, they need to be engaged in it so they can carry it forward. It's not just coming up with some words. It's having them feel it because they experienced building that vision together. Thank you.
Great. So I'm hearing from Councilmember Deutsch that he'd like us to probably put together a new process that would outreach to more people. However, we are able to do that. And there's, there's definitely different technologies we can use besides a Zoom meeting and besides paper surveys. So we can look into that. So is there any, are there any other suggestions from the council members on, on the actions you'd like to take? Would, do you want to have a new process drafted and presented?
My only comment is I hope we take advantage of the work you've already done, Juliana and Todd as well. Those are building blocks. I mean, that was a worthwhile exercise. It predates COVID and everything that's happened. But I agree with Councilmember Deutsch. If we're just going to get in a room and eat pizza and come up with three beautiful sentences, that doesn't really advance the ball on the vision for our community and priorities that, to me, as a business person, this is what we tried to build into the budget process, a 24-year budget that really, the whole process becomes forward-looking. We've never done that before as a city. So we need, on the policy and substance side, to match what we've done on the budget side. And I simply defer to you and the city manager because it's not in my skill set as to how to do it.
I move, we table this.
Well, how about, sorry, my internet's being unstable for a second.
I like the idea of coming back.
Yeah, so what I was just going to propose is that it sounds like we have unanimous consent that we would like to keep the data that we have and, and use that as part of it, but to come back with a new plan for engagement and visioning. So I am actually going to be taking a vacation for like the first time in two years. So I could probably have that done for our second meeting in November. So I will work with the city manager to schedule that. Are there any other discussion items or comments on, on this before we move to future agenda items? All right, seeing none, I will move us into future agenda items. So I've got, um, Councilmember Deutsch for, for, yep, so for the speed bumps, do you want to meet with City Manager Uhas first and kind of come up with how you want to formulate that? And I'll work with Todd to put it on the agenda. How that ends up working out.
Yes, we would.
Okay, cool. Yeah, and we might, you know, depending on how extensive everything is, maybe we'll get some planning commission input on it as well.
Sure.
Before it comes to us. So I'll have, why don't you guys get in contact with Todd and work on that one?
Will.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Just, just for your information, the speed bumps that we are talking about installing are what they use in national parks. When the forest fire guys come through there and they slow them down, or when truckers come through there, they slow them down. And they can be pulled out for the winter. And there, there seems to be a really big demand for speed bumps up here on Siskiyou Avenue by the school.
And for South First Street, I would imagine, too.
And South First Street. So there, that's what we're trying to bring.
Yeah, and I understand that before, I don't want to get into necessarily a discussion right now, but I'll coordinate with Todd. Yeah, I understand that. I think, I think there's a little bit more to it in terms of exactly what we just mentioned, where there might be multiple areas. And we'll have to look at a budget for the purchase and things like that. So I'll work with City Manager Uhas, but if, if Dave, you and Bruce can draft an email to him with the information that you have, that would give us a starting point to put something together for a future agenda.
You got it.
You will do.
Great. Cool. Councilmember Art.
Well, on our minutes from the October 1st meeting, item 12, future agenda items, the second one is Historic District Committee Reforming. Again, thanks to you. I think Todd and I had a really good discussion with the State Office of Historic Preservation. They gave us a number of ideas. And Todd, if you heard it differently, chime in, but what I heard from our state advisors is ordinance-wise, we're in pretty good shape. But we do need some sort of a structure. We talked about business improvement districts. We talked about other forms. But really, leaving oversight of the historic district with two members of the planning commission, as Ron McLeod testified, that doesn't work. So I hope this stays on the agenda. I think there's no shortage of citizens that care enough about the historic district that they would be willing to help us here. Thank you.
Okay.
If I can add one piece to that, what I heard on the call, that seems to be one of the first low-hanging fruit that we should be picking off is designating as a city our, you know, our own historic district, so we have more control over it. And there are, appear to be sample ordinances on the state website that we can tailor to our needs.
Sounds good. All right, thank you. We'll work on that one for a future agenda item. Councilmember Brian, do you have anything for future agenda items?
I don't, I guess, other than to say that, you know, Dean, the results of Measure H election will have a lot to discuss in the near future.
Yes. All right. Anyone else? Any other future agenda items that I missed? All right, seeing none, we will move into adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'm having too much fun. I move, I second the motion.
All right, motion by Councilmember Art, seconded by Councilmember Deutsch. Excuse me. We will move into adjournment. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Abstentions. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for tonight and.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Good job.
Good job. Have a good night.
Yeah, you guys have a good night, too.